Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, May 25, 2023. Brian, can you do roll call, please?
Mr. Sae, Mr. Grippo.
President.
Mr. Hopkins, Dr. Hopkins, excuse me. Mr. Jackson.
President.
Ms. Maris, Mr. Shabon.
Here.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. La Court.
Here. And for the record, both Nishida and Lori let me know that they would not be able to make this, tonight's meeting. Can I get a motion to, Brian, can you read the Open Public Meeting Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential?
So moved.
Moved by Ardman, seconded by Walter. Sammy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned to confidential for the purpose of discussing personnel negotiations and a personnel matter. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, and we're adjourned. Good evening and welcome back. It is still Thursday, May 25, 2023, and we just came back from an executive session. Minutes for the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Dennis, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, can you read the mission statement, please?
Absolutely. Mission Statement of Franklin Township Public Schools. Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ardman, seconded by.
Second.
Who?
Walter.
Huh? Oh, Walter. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The agenda is now adopted. And now we are on to our presentation for our volunteer recognition of our incredible past leadership of Franklin High School Band Support Group and the past leadership of Franklin High School Choir Support Group. Take it away, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'm not sure how many of you are here today, but if you are here from the Band Parents Association, if you could raise your hand or come up here so that I know who I'm speaking to or about. Come on, stand by us. Okay, so most of the quotes and information from this presentation were provided by Laverne White, who volunteered for the band camp and pick crew, banquet, and any other volunteer opportunities, and was elected as president for the 2016-17 year, and Kimberly Bruno, who started volunteering in 2016 and became president a few years later. The mission statement of the Franklin High School Band Parents is stated here: "To support the continuation and advancement of music education in the Franklin Township school system by providing supplementary funding and assistance to the Franklin High School Marching Band, Color Guard, Winter Guard, and indoor percussion programs through donations and fundraising activities." But these quotes reflect what the group really did. "I showed up to help with band camp, and Lana Fuller quickly pulled me into the kitchen prepping food for breakfast and lunch during band camp week. They also moved equipment, chaperoned students, ran the concession stand, fed those students on trips, and hosted and prepared logistics for the band camp program. Fundraising was another large part of their endeavors, including the famous vendor discount cards which brought the local businesses in as partners to the group." I remember, that was when I first started here. "We asked the leadership, what did you accomplish? One of the things that they said were, 'We were able to work together with all the band teachers and volunteers to create and pull off the first district-wide band concert.' Bringing together the elementary school bands, the middle school, and the high school, the Band Parents Association supplied the funds, volunteers, and donations needed for this concert." These were just a few of the accomplishments that they mentioned, that were mentioned by the leaders. They were able to work together. Another highlight was the year the MetLife Regional Championship was won against a lot of other extremely competitive schools. Franklin Marching Band crushed it and placed first at 12:30 a.m. Another memory was when the marching band took their trip to Disney. This leader had really wanted to chaperone but was afraid to fly. She said, "All of the chaperones and students kept telling me everything was going to be fine and that I would enjoy it. Thanks to the support of my marching band family, I got over my fear of flying." There is a mutual fan club between the directors of the marching band and the leadership of this group. Band director, David Bur, Dan, Daniel Bur, Dan Bur, sorry, says, "I hold the members of the Franklin High School Band Parents Association in the highest esteem. They work diligently behind the scenes, ensuring that all aspects of the marching band run smoothly. Without their assistance, the Franklin High School Band would not be able to provide the same wonderful experience to the students of Franklin as well as the community of large." And the leadership credit, and the leadership of the Band Parents Association credits the leadership of excellent band directors, Dan Burres and Eric Diaz. "They are remarkable," they say, "and have a lot of positive impact on the students' dedication and achievements." And so we salute some of the former leaders of the Franklin High School Band Association, most of which are not here. Kimberly Bruno, who supplied quite a few of the quotes, as well as most of the pictures for this presentation, is here. So if you'd like to go and greet the board, and then you can shake your hand, and then I'll take a photo. Dan, Dan, you have your camera? Dan, can you take a picture? Do you have your camera? Can you take a? When, yeah, when they're done shaking. The group said. The group said, "We were just proud parents, happy to jump in and help the program. Music directors and students achieve greatness. That group may have moved on, but their work continues to inspire." Thank you. Will you see any of the other people? Will you see of any of the people? Otherwise, I can now answer them.
So before you move on to the next piece, everybody loves to hear a band. It gets you really excited, and I personally like, it's, I love the band. But on Monday, Franklin High School Marching Band will be appearing in the Memorial Day program, taking place from, parade starts at 12 and it ends at the Veterans Memorial at the municipal complex. So grab your chairs, park at the municipal complex, hang out, listen to, watch, listen to the band, listen to all of our kids, our junior R T C, our students, other students, and have a good time. And then stay for the presentation for the Memorial Day Parade. Thank you. And thank you so much for the parade, for the band.
Okay. Hang on one second. I just have to get the other. Thank you. Okay. This next presentation is for the Choir Parents Association. If anyone is here from that group, if you could come up, come up. A small but dedicated group who came back. This group started under the former choir director, Betty Demonic. The current music director, Mr. Tim Walton, describes this group. "The Choir Parents Association serves as a support group for the vocal music department. Though the idea may start at the head, they are the ones who get the body moving to see it through. Their passion for their children are the reasons why they do what they do. Over the years, their efforts have raised money for various scholarships, funded field trips, and master classes with guest artists, all through fundraising and concessions at the fall and spring productions." A former leader described the group. "We were a determined group of parents. We all enjoyed celebrating our children's successes within the choir as well as working together to ensure, to ensure that kids enjoyed special experiences with the choir." Another said, "I helped fundraising by selling shop-ready items to other choir parents. I baked goods to sell at intermission during the FHS theatrical productions, sold baked goods at concessions at the plays, and helped out as best I could." "The Franklin High School Choir Band Association organized and ran fundraisers for students to raise money for their yearly trip either to Disney or to, or to compete, or to a New York City Broadway show and lunch, to help defray, to help defray the costs. They also raised money for scholarships for seniors. They organized the FHS Winter Cabaret, which was their biggest fundraiser of the year. That was also to raise scholarships for their seniors. One year of note had all of the seats taken and standing, and a standing-room-only crowd at this event." "The work these passionate families did provided many wonderful opportunities for the student, and students, including trips to Hawaii. I had a one, I have had many wonderful experiences with the FHH Choir, ranging from winter cabarets, alumni cabarets, and Hawaiian trips. One of the most memorable events for one leader was when the group traveled to Washington, D.C. to perform at the White House. She says, 'I will never forget the pride we parents had at watching the beauty of the students perform their incredible Christmas repertoire.'" That's the magical. "Many students and adults involved still remain friends to this day. The vocal music department was and is an asset to Franklin High School and the community. Our children benefited greatly from participating in choir vocal music classes and vocal theatrical productions. Quite a few of these past leaders had to decline this evening because of other commitments. For one, she said, 'Unfortunately, I not be able to attend the Board of Education meeting because I will be attending a play which the FHS Thesbian Society is performing that my daughter Rebecca Russo is directing.' Others had weddings, school events, and they were kept away by that. One said, 'I sincerely appreciate the recognition for being part of the FHS Choir Vocal Music Parents Association over the years. I am very glad to have helped support the students and the musical programs produced by the vocal music department.'" And so we salute these past leaders and volunteers, and this is Susie Francisi, who is the one who could make it today. There you go. Thank you. Gotta take a picture. Who put the boy kid? And for you and for those who couldn't make it, we thank you for the legacy you left behind. And that closes out our presentations for today. At the next board meeting, at the end of the month, we will be recognizing our retirees as well as the current leadership of our school support organizations.
Thank you, Mary. And before the choir parents go, before anybody goes, actually, the cabaret is happening on June 10th at 7 o'clock at Samson, and I'm sure there's information online. But as always, the proceeds go to benefit Kevin Maskell and Andrew Rusinello Memorial Performing Arts Scholarships, which the performances are like unbelievable. And a lot of talent comes out of that, and sometimes from your husband. And the magical singers as well are just such a delight to listen to. So thank you very much, you guys, for everything. We appreciate it. And now we are moving on to our student representative report.
And before our volunteers run away, I want to say thank you as well. I also want to thank Mrs. Clark, who on behalf of the board, put tonight's program together. But all year long, we have been recognizing the work of our wonderful volunteers. So much of what gets accomplished in a school district is because of the diligence and work of community members such as yourself, supporting the organizations. I know Mr. Reyno's here, our supervisor of Fine Visual Performing Arts, and I know previous to Mr. Reyno, Ms. Mitchell, always spoke very highly of this group. And I know all our administrators and all of our teachers and everyone else involved with the programs for our kids all speak very highly of our support groups. So, Mrs. Clark, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for going the, putting the extraordinary effort in and going the extra mile for making sure that we connected with the different groups and the folks who have maybe moved on from us for, for good reason, because maybe their children have moved on to other things. But we wanted to appreciate you for the times that you were here and for continuing to give and continuing to support our schools and our kids. So on behalf of the board, not only do I thank Mary, I thank you folks, and I thank all the other previous groups that came in the months before, because again, the work you do is fantastic, and you do make a significant difference in a school community. So thanks. With that said, the end of the school year is coming fast, and with that, we have a host of more traditional events being held at our schools, including our traditional Moving Up ceremonies at the elementary level, our Grade Eight Dance, our Grade Eight Promotion, which will be held at FHS this year on June 22nd, our Prom Yearbook Signing Dinner, and of course, FHS Graduation, which will be held in the morning at Franklin High School on the morning of June 23rd, followed by Project Graduation, which will also be held at the high school later that evening. For more information about all of these events, will be forthcoming and will be released, and some of it's already been released, by the school principals. So between now and then, if you have any questions about events, please reach out to your school. Don't hesitate to contact your principal and connect with your principal of your assigned school. These are wonderful celebratory-type activities that we are now returning in a more traditional format than we have been able to do the last few years. So we're excited about it, look forward to it, and can't wait to celebrate. And it'll be here before you know it. Be here before you know it. We have lots of exciting motions on tonight's agenda, but one in particular I wish to call attention to is the motion which recommends the adoption of the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, AOPA, I believe is how we reference that, right, Dr. Lagren? The AOPA curriculum. As many are aware, or maybe you're not, a few years back, thanks to the generosity of a local foundation called New Jersey SAFE, which is short for New Jersey Student Aviator Flight Experience, we were afforded the opportunity to start an after-school aviation club at Franklin High School. Thanks to the support of this wonderful foundation called New Jersey SAFE, whose mission it is to remove barriers for those interested in becoming involved in the field of aviation, our club has generate, generated lots of interest among our students. And some of our students besides, besides earning their private pilot's license, they have now moved on to university programs to study and further their aviation knowledge in preparation for entering the field of aviation. So the motion before the board tonight allows us to really take the next steps with our program. And once we have the approval to adopt the AOPA curriculum for aviation, we'll begin working toward building a block of courses that will be offered to high school students, FHS students, as a pathway leading to a jumpstart in the field of aviation. I want to thank all those involved in helping us to develop our club a few years back. A special thanks to United Airlines Pilot Captain Chablis. He is a founding member of New Jersey SAFE, who has worked alongside us, all helping to push our program forward. We are extremely excited about these next steps and the future of our program. This has not been easy work. It's been challenging work. It's unique. Not many schools have this opportunity. It's been difficult on the high school schedule. I know. I see Dr. Solomon is here. I want to thank him for working with us, especially in trying to move this into our regular curriculum to provide a regular pathway for students and even more courses that will help them. We're talking about future connections with local community colleges that will afford students dual-credit opportunities while they're in this pathway. Of course, that's down the road, but it's hopefully not too distant, far future. So really, really a wonderful opportunity. We had a student last year who came to our recognition program for students and talked about his opportunity for earning a private pilot's license with the support of New Jersey SAFE, that he believes he would have never, ever, ever had that opportunity if it wasn't for the support of SAFE, because he wouldn't have been able to acquire the airtime. So it's really, it's been great, and we look forward to bigger things. And there's a motion tonight that I thought was worthy of us highlighting because of the uniqueness of it, especially at the high school level. I'm certain by now, many if not all, have also read the report released by the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office regarding a deadly shooting that took place late in the evening on May 11 in Franklin Township. This news was both saddening and shocking. While we recognize this event did not occur during school, on school grounds, or during school hours, due to the age of those involved, we wanted to reassure our families that there are resources available to assist students in processing this tragic event. Our student assistance counselors, our school counselors, and others have been working and will continue to work with students, supporting them as we move forward. Also, as detailed in my May 16 letter posted on the district website, safety and security remains a top priority of our school board and in our schools. Finally, I want to thank our middle school P T S L for hosting, Mr. Wilson, our Director of School Management, and myself, during their monthly meeting a little earlier this week. The time we were afforded gave us the opportunity to directly address questions and concerns regarding safety, security, and communications, and also to provide some direction to parents who might have questions about how can we best support our students. So thanks again to those involved in helping to create the space for us to do just that. That's all for us. And a final reminder that our schools will be closed tomorrow. They'll be closed on Monday and Tuesday as well, in observance of the Memorial Day weekend. So thanks to all those who have or continue to faithfully serve our country. And that's it for us.
Thank you. So earlier this month, the district held the Invention Competition, which was sponsored by the Seton Towny Foundation. The winning teams from each of our elementary schools and middle school campuses had the opportunity to present their projects. The team from Connerly Road School took first place, Pine Grove Manor, second, and Franklin Park School, third. Since this was the first year that the middle school level participated, both campuses were awarded first prize at that level. These talented students, along with the many others representing our district's finest, will be recognized at a board meeting, a special board meeting, on Monday, June 5th, beginning at 6:30 p.m. at Hamilton Street Campus. And congratulations to our Green Team of EAS for securing a grant from Sustainable Jersey, funded by the P S E and G Foundation. The Elizabeth Avenue School Team was one of 35 New Jersey municipalities, schools, and school districts selected. They will be using their funds to rejuvenate the, the existing schoolyard into an outdoor oasis for learning and wellness. It will be made accessible to all student populations, including those who use wheelchairs. The entire school community will be involved in the design and running of the outdoor classroom, from voting on name to developing rules, to make, to maintaining its organization and cleanliness. And that ends my report. Can I get a motion to open public comment, please, on agenda items only?
So seconded.
By Bill, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on agenda items only is now open to the public. Just please state your name and address when you.
Thank you. Hi, Kate Reynolds. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Connerly Road School. I'm not sure, this is the first time I'm talking to you guys, so I don't know if it's an agenda items per se. It had been in the past. My biggest comment was actually about the change in the calendar of the school district. I was unaware that we were, I mean, my, my fault for not really paying attention, but when the board changed the calendar of this year and brought on extra dates, it definitely was burdensome, I think, to families. I understand you want to give back the time of the snow days to the students and the parent, the, the staff and, and the teachers, but with, with parents such as myself, who is an essential worker, it made it very difficult for us to scramble to get coverage for the, for my daughter who's in fifth grade. I would love to leave her alone, but not quite yet. We're working on that for next year, as she enters middle school. It's just something to think about for next year, when, if, when and if we have that opportunity, if we can maybe tack it on to the end of the school year, a little earlier, so parents are more aware of it, to, to find resources for, for, for children who they're, who they may have to work. I'm going to work over the holiday weekend. It's a little troublesome. Anything, the other thing I had was, and I don't know if this would go under anything in particular, would be the scheduling issues with the portal for the middle school students. I don't know if, if that was ever brought up to anybody. There were some, my daughter entering school, entering into middle school, had some very challenging times with the Genesis Portal. It, it got confused. There were some errors. I had scheduled her, my daughter in particular, I think other parents had had the problem. And then they approached her directly at the school after we had picked out her classes, and, and I wasn't so sure if she got everything she needed. Then there were some issues with the portal and transportation. I know that a few parents had that issue too, especially around where I live, with where they were going next year. It had stated she was going to SGS, which is very convenient for us. My mother lives across the street. So it works out pretty well. And then I get a letter saying she's going to the other campus. Being a parent who hasn't done middle school yet, it was a little confusing and, and just something to look out for. Other than that, that was pretty much all I had today. Sorry, I'll be more on it next year. Sorry, I'll be more on it next year. Thank you very much. I've been with you guys for seven years. It's the first time I really had to come up to you guys and tell you something, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on agenda items only? Motion to close public comment made by Bill, seconded by Sammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on agenda items is now closed.
Thank you, President LaCour. So just so, there's 180 school days, so the Give Back Days are days that are determined by contract. And what we do in order to make sure that folks are aware is, the days are determined by committee, the school days, that is, and then the Give Back Days are also determined by committee. It is traditional, just so there's an understanding, that to avoid changes in the last day of school, because it's difficult to change the last day of school when you're a pre-K through 12 district, and the reason for that is because you're determining your graduation day, your project graduation day, and there's a lot of planning and effort that goes into all that, and makes it very difficult to change that day. So lots of districts, not just Franklin, oftentimes will give the days back, if by contract they're obligated to give the days back. They'll give them back during the school year. But what we do do, so for future reference, the calendar, when it comes out, does have the Give Back Days predetermined on it. Just so you know, it can be difficult, I understand, to sometimes decipher that, because there's a lot of information on those calendars. But you'll see that the Give Back Days come back in a particular order. If there are three unused emergency closing days, the first one to go back is always the last day of school. So the last day of school now has become Thursday rather than Friday, but we still kept graduation day on Friday, for those of you that are graduating. But you'll graduate the morning rather than the afternoon. It gives us a little more flexibility, but it doesn't impact project graduation or any of the other days. The other two days always go back around this same time. They'll go back, for future reference, the first Give Back Day becomes the Friday of the Memorial Day weekend, and that's been traditional here in Franklin, long before I got here, eight years ago. And the second Give Back Day that goes back is typically the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So this has been the pattern, and it is noted on the calendar, although I agree with you, it is difficult to somehow decipher that. So we'll highlight it and make it a little stronger next year. Maybe we can change the color of those Give Back Days to a red or something, so that it, you know, highlights folks, so they do get that.
It would be helpful.
For future reference, just know that that's how that works, and we do stay away from giving too many days back at the end of the year, although that would be nice, but then it really does create some complications and some troubles, in particular, the high school level, so. And then the portal, yes, we did have a mix-up on that, and I apologize. That was an inconvenience. I think we did apologize about that. That was an error on our part, so we take responsibility for that. Some of the folks got assigned to the wrong building, and that was our error, not the Portal's error. That was definitely our error, and I apologize. We did get it straightened out. So if you ever have any questions about assignment, though, certainly reach out to our office. We'll get you connected to the right folks, and we can straighten out where you're assigned. But there are a lot of things that go into that, just so we're understanding, because certain, you know, one campus hosts E S L, then we have one campus that has certain special ed programs, another campus that has others. So kids do shift around, even though it may not be in their particular zone, and even though it may not affect your child, and one would always think that is easily spit out of a computer, but sometimes computers only give us back the information that we put in. And if we put it in wrong to begin with, well, then it's going to spit it out wrong. So I can't even blame this one on a computer, so I guess I'm going to have to take the rap and the hit on that one. But we did get it straightened out as quickly as possible, and I apologize for any confusion or inconvenience. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Now we're on to our committee reports. Sammy, would you do Facilities and Finance, please? Can you grab it off of Bill? I will start at this end. Dennis, while you're looking it up, Sammy. Dennis, can you do Policy, please? Hey, Bill, go ahead, do Safety.
Sammy's going to get, let me give you...
Sammy, I'll get it for you.
Okay.
Can you go back to the caption thing? Oh, thanks. Safety and security, as Dr. Ravalley said, is a major priority for the board and for this committee. We had our meeting on Wednesday, May 17th, at 7:15. Myself as Chair, Lori Maris, Sammy Shabon, Nancy LaCour, Orville, and Dr. Ravalley, Orville Wilson, that is. The committee reviewed the Student Safety Data System Report for Period One, that ends at the end of the calendar year, December. So the S S D S Period One Report is a snapshot of the incidents of student suspensions and harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations that have been recorded during that period of time from September through December 31st. At the end of the year, you will get the balance of the reports. The committee will recommend to accept the Period One Report during the June 20th regular meeting of the Board of Ed. The committee also reviews proposed revisions to the district's Student Code of Conduct. And some of those revisions, if you're interested in hearing, would be to update related to staff changes, staffing changes, school safety statements, school behavior threat assessment and management, dress code, the Board of Ed policy of student supervision after-school dismissal, portable communication devices, revision that clarifies student use of recording devices, authority of the principal to suspend student privileges for repeated violations of the code that jeopardize the rights of other students to receive an education in a safe and secure school environment, and examples of how district staff can use restorative practices to address levels of student behavior. The committee will recommend to approve the revised Student Code of Conduct during the June 20th Board of Ed meeting. And items that were reviewed and discussed also, the committee discussed systems and procedures that are in place to make our district's school spaces safe for students and staff to learn, grow, and the services that are supported, that are available for students who may be struggling with traumatic adverse experiences. You could refer to Dr. Ravalley's report. The committee reviewed the end-of-the-school activities and received an update on district safety projects. And then we discussed the various district safety projects. And the meeting adjourned at 9:20 that evening.
Thank you, Bill. Sammy, can you do?
Facilities.
And Finance?
Sure. So for Facilities, in attendance were myself, Ms. Lori Maris, Ms. Nancy LaCour, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Banano, Mr. Valencia, Mr. Ellis, and Mr. McNamara. Updates, project updates, Mr. Banano provided an update on the construction of the new buildings and grounds facility and the Warrior Health Center. Both projects expected to be complete in the early fall. Facilities use requests, Mr. Banano reviewed four facilities use requests, which appear on the board's agenda for approval. Energy, Mr. Ellis provided, and I might add, a very lively update on the Clermont Solo Report. It's doing very well, and we're making tons of money from it. And for the good of the order, Dr. Ravalley provided an update on the collaboration with the township on the Zoo Fall Community Health Project. For those that don't know, these are two really big things. So we have the Warrior Health Center, which is going to help all of our staff and teachers to have access to easier health care. And for the Zoo Fall, hopefully we get that approved. That's going to provide a huge boost to our student population to get the health care they need. So this is two huge initiatives that are happening under the Facilities to improve the health of our entire student population and teacher population. So I think those are two really good things. The meeting adjourned at 6:23 p.m. Respectfully submitted. And then Finance Committee, you want me to go right into Finance? So Finance Committee, in attendance were Ms. Lori, not Mr., but Ms. Lori Maris, myself, Artiman, Ms. LaCour, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Banano, and Mr. Valencia. Under financials and contracts, the committee reviewed the bill list for the month of May and the Board Secretary's report, transfer report, bank reconciliation for the prior month. For charter school, the district paid $1,663,526.80 in tuition and $90,781.20 in transportation to the charter schools for the month of May. This brings the total charter school cost to date, $19,953,041. And that's about 1,237 students. And the total transportation year to date is $836,290. The meeting ended at 6:41. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Sammy. Dennis, can you do Policy, please?
Yes. The Policy Committee met on May 15, 2023, at 7:30. Those who was present was myself, Ashia Desani, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. John Ravalley, Nancy LaCour, Mary Clark, and we had an administrative intern there, Craig Lewis. The committee reviewed and discussed revisions to the following policy. Policy 7440, school district security, and Policy 8140, student enrollments. Revisions to these policies reflect recent changes in the applicable law and administrative code. The committee agreed to pass both revised policies on the full board for their consideration. Among the changes to Policy 7440 is the type of information which must be supplied to local law enforcements. Specifically, critical incident mapping data, which is defined in the revised law and policy. This information is set electronically and replaces the blueprints and maps formally provided. Among the changes to Policy 8140 is the elimination of the requirement to keep separate registers dependent on a student's grade or classification. Both policies have administrative regulations, which will also be updated and reissued after the revised policies are adopted. Finally, the committee reviewed the district wellness policy, annual district summary progress report, and policy assessment, which shows the district's progress towards goals in the areas of nutrition and physical activity, as well as areas of focus for the District Wellness Committee next year. The report was respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Dennis. Mike, can you do Curriculum, please?
Yep, absolutely. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting met on Monday, May 15th of this year, virtually at 6:00 p.m. Present were myself as Chair, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Hopkins, President LaCour, Dr. Logren, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Kuras, Mr. Lewis, and Ms. Pancholi. We discussed new business, first of all, and we made some proposals for the board's consideration tonight. The first was a motion to approve world language program revisions. These program revisions will increase access to Latin, which serves as the foundation for Spanish and French, and also allow students the option of pursuing additional learning in Latin throughout middle and high school. There's a motion to approve an A O P A Foundation High School Aviation STEM Curriculum for the 2023-2024 school year. Currently, the district supports an after-school aviation club for students at F H S, and this curriculum would enable F H S to offer a deeper understanding of the concepts introduced into the after-school club and help make a career in aviation more accessible to students. There's also a motion to approve the Danielson Evaluation Model for certificated instructional staff members and the Strong Evaluation Model for district administrators for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion to, there's a motion to improve a memorandum of agreement with Farley Dickinson to enable students to take dual enrollment courses that will become C T E designated once the N J Department of Education approves the district's revised application. There's a motion to approve three existing F H S marketing courses as dual enrollment courses in the support of establishing a C T E marketing program. That would be C T E Marketing 1, 2, and 3 for grades 10 through 12, and that would begin in spring of 2024. There's a motion to apply for up to $22,069 in Perkins Grants for the Franklin High School C T E Program. Perkins is a federal education grant program designed to support career and technical education initiatives. There's a motion to approve revised articulation agreements with R V C C for the C T E Dance Program for grades 9 through 12, beginning fall of 2023, and for C T E Digital Media and Film in support of the district's C T E Television Production Program for grades 10 through 12. That will begin in the fall of this year. There's a motion to approve a Future Educator's Pilot Program. This pilot would allow Franklin High School seniors to shadow teachers at McAfee Road School and Elizabeth Avenue School to teach lessons and learn more about teaching as a career. There's a motion to approve several course revisions listed on this B O E agenda, and there's a motion to approve district summer school offerings and programs attached as an exhibit on tonight's agenda. The committee also discussed a couple items. Mr. Kuras updated the C N I Committee on Proposed Changes in World Languages, and Dr. Logren shared information on accessing the N J School Performance Reports on the district website. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a lot. It was a lot, Dan.
Yeah, we had some pretty long, busy, very busy meetings.
And when we discussed Latin, we didn't talk about Eschulus Glabar, Gulagulu, or the Puma Conkola Cougar, which is the Ohio Buckeye, Michigan Wolverine, and Pennsylvania Nittany Lion. So maybe our kids, or maybe our kids will know that. So.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mike. And now we're on to Artiman. Can you do Personnel, New Jersey School Boards Delegate Assembly, and Somerset County School Boards Association meeting, please?
Absolutely. So Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on May 17th. The meeting began at 6:02 p.m. In attendance were myself as Chair, Walter Jackson, Lori Maris, Nancy LaCour, Dr. Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Schneider. The committee reviewed and discussed the following items. Personnel Report, May 25th, Number 11. The committee reviewed the report, which has appointments, including staff for 23-24 school year, C S T summer evaluations, curriculum writing and revisions, staff for equity leaders, E S L summer program, E S Y, E S S E R summer programs, Title I Summer Academy, Family Engagement Night, Parent Academy, summer transitional programs, and R B T training stipends for paraprofessionals. Included in this report are also reappointments for the Franklin Township School Support Association members, buildings and grounds, food service workers, safety officers, lunch roommates, and transportation, and the non-aligned staff. In addition, revisions to the administrator reappointments are also included on this report as ratified by the association. Mr. Banano reviewed with the committee a comprehensive study of Somerset County District Salary Guides as part of the Teacher Salary Guide comparison. Then we discussed the F T S S A Memorandum of Agreement Summary. Mr. Banano reviewed the Memorandum of Agreement Summary, which is on tonight's agenda. There was no discussions in the good of the order. The meeting ended at 7:10 p.m. The Delegate Assembly for New Jersey School Boards was held on... The Delegate Assembly for New Jersey School Boards was held on May 13 at the Conference Center at Mercer in West Windsor. The President of the New Jersey School Boards, Irene Le Febré, presided over her last meeting, and elections were held for the other new members, which were President Dr. Karen Cortolino, Vice President for County Activities Barry Fitzgerald, and Vice President for Legislation Resolutions Shanta Jackson. Besides the elections, there were resolutions passed. The three resolutions were, the first one, there was a resolution from the Hunterdon Central Regional High School District that proposed new policy language limiting New Jersey mandated student assessments to one assessment or one assessment series that measures student proficiency in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and that all other assessments be left to the discretion of local districts based on each district's assessment needs. There was a second resolution from the Plainfield Board of Education that proposed additional policy language that would enhance and support student health services by including training for teaching staff and administrators in the provision of emergency support services, including cardiopulmonary resuscitation, first aid, automated external defibrillators, the emergency administration of ephedrine, insulin, glucagon, and asthma treatment. The resolution also sought to expand the scope of Janet's Law to after-school programs and that the New Jersey School Boards Association encourage all New Jersey schools to provide regular refresher courses and ongoing training opportunities to ensure that staff and administrators maintain their proficiency in these critical health-related skills. A third resolution came from Toms River Regional Ocean Board of Education, which proposed new policy language seeking the ability for boards of education that hold their elections in November to put a second question on the general election ballot that would apply for the next fiscal year rather than the current year as required by law. And finally, the last resolution delegates voted on came from the Union County Vocational Technical Board of Education, which proposed revised policy authorizing the New Jersey School Boards Association Nominating Committee, specific authority to consider Vocational Technical Board members, the ability to be considered for participation on the nominating committee. And that was the Delegate Assembly. Finally, on Thursday, May 18, 2023, Somerset County School Boards Association had their spring celebration meeting. And the meeting began at 6:00 PM with dinner and started at 6:55 PM. And I am very happy to announce that Franklin Township Board of Education received a board certification that we are now a certified board of education. We have completed the number of trainings required to be a certified board. So members of the Board of Education were present, some of the members, and Dr. Ravalley was present there, and we received that commendation from the Somerset County School Boards Association, and we had members from the New Jersey School Boards Association. We also had our President Nancy La Court receiving two awards as a 15-year milestone and a master board member certification that night. And I was also recognized there as a certified board member certification there. So it was a great celebratory night, and we really had a good time when our township name was called up several times, and we were there to be recognized and enjoyed receiving that acclamation. And that ends all my reports.
Thank you. And you were also voted in as Vice President for your second term for Somerset County School Boards.
Oh, yes, I forgot that.
Okay. So we had lots going on, and the New Jersey School Boards Association is where we get our professional development to become better school board members. And to get certified is a big deal in every class that we take. There's some stuff that's mandatory, but everything that we're taking is actually helping us to become better board members. So we are trying to do the best we can for you. And now can I get a motion to move the agenda?
You did do that already.
I'm sorry. Fell asleep. Now onto new business.
I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A2 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions, A3 AAPI Heritage Month, A4 Juneteenth Resolution, A5 Special Education Settlement, A6 Use of Internet Search Engines, A7 Facility Use, A8 Emergency Bus Exit Drill Report, A9 Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Grades, A10 Extraordinary Aid, A11 District Wellness Policy Summary Progress Report and Assessment, A12 FTPS Revised Safe Return Plan, A13 Revised Policies Second Reading and Adoption, A14 Revised Bylaws Second Reading and Adoption, A15 Revised Regulations Adoption, A16 Revised Policies First Reading, A17 Special Education Settlement, B1 Warrants and Payrolls, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approvals A through V, B4 Change Orders None at This Time, B5 2023-2024 Bid Contract Renewals, B6 State Aid, B7 Resolution for Participation in Coordinated Transportation, B8 Donation of COVID PPE Face Shields, B9 Purchase of a District Vehicle Food Services, C1 Out-of-District Students School Year 2022-2023, C2 Field Trip Destinations, C3 Field Trip Applications No Applications at This Time, C4 Educator Evaluation System Danielson Evaluation Model, C5 District Leader Evaluation System Strong Evaluation Model, C6 Memorandum of Agreement with Fairleigh Dickinson, C7 Future Educator's Pilot Program, C8 AOPA Foundation Curriculum, C9 Perkins Grant for Franklin High School CTE Dance Program, C10 Revised Articulation Agreement with RVCC, C11 New Course Approvals, C12 Revised Course Approvals, C13 World Languages Revisions, C14 Summer Offerings and Programs 2023, P1 Employment Contracts, P2 FTSSA Successor Agreements, P3 Psychiatric and Physical Examination, P4 Personnel Report Number 11 Dated May 25, 2023. Once again, I would like to make a motion to move the following, R1, M1, A1 through A17, B1 to B9, C1 to C14, and P1 to P4.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second. Nancy, I have a question. On Dr. Ravalley's report, is P3 and P4 is different? P03?
Actually, there's an error. P3 is also written as P4 on the agenda. Just a typo.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments? Dennis? Mike? Walter? Sammy?
No.
Bill?
Nope.
Arvin?
Nope.
Can you do roll call, please? Brian?
Mr. Grippo? Dr. Hopkins?
I'm going to recuse myself from P03 Psychiatric and Physical Examination, but the rest of them, I'm good.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Shabbat?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. La Court?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we are on to comments from the public on any item. But first, I would like to welcome Commissioner Director Chanel Robinson. It's always a pleasure to have you at our board meetings. So thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. So please come up. Can I get a motion to open public comment on any? So moved?
Second.
Moved, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Ravalley. Welcome, Dr. Hopkins. I don't think I've had the pleasure of meeting you. I pretty much know everybody else that's serving up here today. Two things. One is I am excited about the avionics program. As an Air Force veteran who served as an avionics specialist, this is great that we're going beyond the borders of the walls and offering opportunities for our students. So I would also like to offer an opportunity, whoever is working with the program, to definitely work closely with Congresswoman's office as she does recommendations if any of those are willing to go or wanting to go to the academy, especially the Air Force Academy. So I support it 100%, and it's good to see the great work that you all continue to do. I also stand here as you have gone through the personnel report. Now, I don't know if many of you knew that the basketball, girls' head basketball varsity coach was named in that personnel list is my son. And I'm proud to announce that he is now that head coach. He talks at nauseam about giving back to the program. He's been coaching for seven years. He graduated from Franklin High School and has gone through most of his years here when we moved to Franklin over 20 years ago. So it's another opportunity and a way of truly being a warrior for life and giving back to the community. So congratulations, Coach Darrell Robinson.
Thank you very much. You guys can connect on the avionics. And congratulations, Coach. I know that we all have a lot to say about that. Especially thank you for bringing your kids. And I know it's late and they're tired. So is there anyone else from the public on any topic?
Hello. My name is Deb Perillo. I live on Metler's Road. I am a PTSO Board Member for the middle school and the high school. I'm here on behalf of myself and also to speak for many parents that couldn't be here tonight because they were otherwise scheduled to attend some of the great performances that are going on in town, dance shows and theater clubs and things. First, I'd like to congratulate the board on your certification. Job well done. We know that as a district, you have all done a lot to help in any way that you can. I'm here tonight to just quickly and briefly talk about, obviously, the situation that happened earlier in the month with the shooting. It's terrifying. Not to get emotional, we do know that the situation happened after school hours. We know that the information is very sensitive due to the nature of the fact that there were minors and many other things. But some of the facts that we do know is that an innocent person was killed, and they were killed by middle schoolers, same middle schoolers that could have been sitting, holding a weapon right next to one of our very own children. I don't know about anybody else, but I can speak for many of my friends and parents that that is an absolutely terrifying feeling to send your child to school, to know that you're going to send them in the moment of safety, and they could be sitting next to a student holding a deadly weapon. So we hear about shootings in other states all the time, and you hear thereafter that we should have, we could have, you know, there were signs, mass shooting, parents, students, staff were killed and murdered, and then it was too late. So I feel that we have the wherewithal and the information to be proactive instead of reactive. I am hoping that, and the other thing I wanted to mention was I want to thank Dr. Ravalley and Mr. Wilson for attending the middle school PTSO meeting. That really showed that you guys are willing to listen and to hear and also show your concern. So with that being said, we would just like to put out some communication for things that other parents are asking for. We understand that we're not always going to be able to get the things that we're asking for, but we do want to communicate. Some parents have voiced that they are looking for increased security. The number of security guards for the number of students in the middle school is really not enough. We have teachers complaining that they're trying to break up fights, that their walkie-talkies are broken, they can't call for help, they're getting injured. These things are happening in school. But the other thing in addition to increased security, other methods. We know that there's wands that are available. They're not being used. We're asking for metal detectors. If that's not possible, there's other ways. Clear backpacks, no more use of backpacks, a possible return to lockers. We know that the kids, basically, my kids' backs are almost broken because they're stating that their book backs are so heavy, but they don't have time to use their lockers. There's not enough time. So an adjustment to the schedule. So these are a few of the things that we are really looking to have either addressed, increased, changed. We know that the students are able to speak with their Saks or their counselors if they're feeling upset or concerned. But in addition to the increased security measures, more of a vocalization to the students. We know that it's against best practice to make an assembly out to the students when something happens. But a lot of the students are really only getting information and giving information via the form of, you know, gossip, as we all do, as children do. It would be nice for them to hear on a whole something that happened recently. If you are concerned, please know that you can come to us. Those comments were not made as a whole to the student. I mean, they don't need to know sensitive information, but they need to know that if they're feeling apprehensive and they want to talk to somebody at school or they're scared, they can do that. So what are we asking for? We're asking for increased security. We're asking for different ways to try and ensure that weapons stay out of school, and we're asking for better communication with the students. So with that being said, just respectfully to share the voices of the families that could not be here tonight.
Hello. Sorry I'm late. I might have missed something. It was an awesome band concert tonight at the middle school. It was fantastic, so that's why I'm late. My name is Wendy Riga. I live on Markham Road in Somerset. And Deb, thank you so much because we are on the President Council and PTSO together. So those voices, she spoke for all of them, so I appreciate that. I do have a question. I wanted to know if there was a policy surrounding RTS children and going to the field trips? Because in light of the murder that happened in the town, I understand RTS, one of the children were RTS, and it gives me great concern that they are allowed to go on field trips. So I had a question about that, if that's an actual policy, that they do go on field trips with the kids. And the second thing, I had a question about the report with Latin. So we do have Latin in middle school. If we're introducing that, do we have teachers now for world languages? Because I think everybody's aware that right now that's a bit of a struggle and a challenge. So I just had a question if we did have any update on world languages and if we have teachers since we're trying to introduce new languages. I think that's it. Thank you, and congratulations on your certification.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on any topic? Five minutes only?
If that's the case, Madam President, I make a motion to close out the public comments.
Motion to close public comment by Dennis, seconded by Walter. All in favor? Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now closed. John, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Madam President. And Ms. Perillo, did I pronounce that right? Perillo, thank you. First off, appreciate the PTO giving us the space to be able to connect with so many parents at once. So we appreciate that. That's first and foremost, because I know we took a lot of your time, and I'm sure you were there very late afterward because you had regular business to do. So we apologize for that, but we wanted to make sure that we remained and answered as many questions as possible. And then secondly, we do appreciate your input. We heard what you said. We heard what you said here. We heard what you said before. We will be sharing that information with the folks that need to hear it. The board has heard it, and the Safety Committee, I'm sure, will digest it and chew on it, and we'll talk with the other administrators about some of the other feedback. So thank you for that. With regard to Ms. Riga and her questions, there's a policy, whether it's RTS, middle school, high school, elementary school, there's a field trip policy, and it covers all of our kids. So there's no difference in policy for any kids, for any programs. So, you know, obviously, you're welcome to peruse that policy. You just have to go click on the Board Policy page and put in the search "field trips," and it'll come up for you. And then teachers available, well, that's a two-part question, actually. So there are Latin teachers available, believe it or not. And that programs, it is a program that a lot of schools have. It is a program that more schools are moving toward, but we've had a lot of interest in our school district. But we've had a lot of interest in our school district or a lot of interest in our school district from folks from that discipline. So, we're hopeful that this will give a boost to our in-person world languages experience, which is, you know, a good thing. And I will also credit Dr. Logren, Mr. Badano, Ms. Schneider, our world languages supervisor, our supervisor of bilingual and ESL education. They've been working hard with an exchange program to bring some teaching professionals under the Department of Education's J1 Visa Program that may also help to boost the world languages in-person experience for our kids. So, I don't make a promise that, I mean, the pool of candidates isn't there, as we've said. And it's a conversation that none other than yesterday we were having with legislators as superintendents at an event to encourage that they do things not only for world languages but for a lot of the other disciplines where it's very difficult to get teachers that will help to create the pool of candidates. And some of that legislation, 11 pieces of legislation were recently released down at Trenton. They haven't been approved, but they're being discussed. We're hopeful that they take some initiative toward adopting some of what was recommended. And a lot of it came out of the Governor's Task Force, which had many sitting superintendents on it. And those that couldn't be on it for other reasons, because we're involved with 1,000 other things, we were able to at least provide our input to those folks who were on it. So, there might be some light at the end of the tunnel. Are they quick fixes? Will they solve the national teacher crisis overnight? Probably not. But will it help to stimulate at least getting some folks back in front of our kids in areas where it's difficult to get folks in front of our kids? We're hopeful. Things such as, just to give you an example, there's a piece of legislation that would encourage retired teachers to come back. You know, obviously, we wouldn't just take any retired teacher. I mean, a retired teacher, similar to the Class 3 Police Officer Program, where if you've recently retired, you can apply to a district and go back, maybe not even your own district, and use your certificate with no penalty or no fear of jeopardizing your pension. That's a piece of legislation, the removal of something called EDTPAF, which, not EDTPAF, the video, yeah, EDTPAF. Yeah, the EDTPAF video piece to a very stringent expensive piece for pre-teaching candidates that they had to go through in order, and it had a lot to do with videoing lessons. And it was just expensive and cumbersome and drove a lot of candidates away, to be honest with you. And some of the prerequisites that are higher than in other professions in order to even enter a teaching program at the collegiate level. So, there's legislation like that and many other bills out there as well that we hope might at least address some of what we've all been struggling with in recent months and certainly the last year or two. So, I hope that somewhat provides some answers. But again, the big thing is, as far as Latin goes, yes, it's a direction we were wanting to go. And the good news is, there are folks available. So, that's another good thing. And that's it for us. Well, we can certainly get Dr. Logren to hear afterward.
Thank you. You got everything? Now, we're on to Good of the Order. Sammy, do you have anything for Good of the Order?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, there was quite a number of events that took place in the last month. I just was happy to go to many of them. The Invention Night that was mentioned earlier by the Sadhani Foundation was really exciting. The Diversity Night was unbelievable. Mr. Plummer did a great job with that, and it was fun, showed the talent, and then it showed the great diversity in Franklin Township. We even got to outfit various wares that Audaman Singh helped fit Dr. Ravalley and I. It was good. I don't know if I could fit in it every day, but it was, it was a good thing. And then, congratulations to Nancy and Audaman for their work in Somerset County School Boards. It's certainly a credit to Franklin Township.
Thank you. And speaking of what Bill was just talking about, can I just have that for a second?
Courtesy of the Franklin Reporter.
Courtesy of the Franklin Reporter Monthly Digest, you will see Dr. Ravalley on the front page with wearing a turban from Seek Youth of Franklin Group. So, thank you for that. Dennis, do you have anything for the Good of the Order?
Other than congratulations to the board, President and Vice President representing Franklin with the certification. Congratulations, Coach Robinson. You fill in some big shoes, and I know your feet are a little bigger than those shoes. We expect some great things. Just have a safe Memorial Weekend and just keep pushing to the end of the school year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike?
No, thank you. It's the end of the school year, right? Folks still got to keep the eye on the prize and get through it, right?
Okay.
Work hard. It's almost over.
Walter?
Yeah, real quick. Congratulations, Coach Darrell. I know the kids are excited that you are, you've been working with a lot of these young girls for a long time. So, I know they're excited that you're getting the head coach position. I know Chloe's excited. So, best of luck to you. Coach Taylor had a strong support system, so you know you will indeed have the same support system. I want to also congratulate the Franklin High School Band Support Group and the Choir Group. Thank you for your volunteer work with the young people. I know they appreciate it, so do we. And I have a quote. Sometimes you have to let everything go. Purge yourself. If you are unhappy with anything, whatever is bringing you down, get rid of it. Because you will find that when you are free, your true creativity, your true self comes out. Tina Turner, rest in peace.
That was gorgeous. Thank you very much. Arden?
I just have to congratulate you, Coach Robinson, again. And I just want to say, I know your mom when I was a PTO parent. And I know Commissioner Robinson said that you, this is your giving back to the community, but she's raised you well because she gives back to the community day in and day out. So, Mom, you've raised him well. And, you know, I'm really proud to call you my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to have our next batch of volunteers coming out of the Robinson family very soon. I'd like to remind you again that Monday is Memorial Day, and the parade takes place from New Brunswick Road going up to Mott, ending at the Veterans Memorial. Parade starts at noon, and you can listen to our incredible marching band. You can see our amazing kids. Our junior ROTC is heavily participating. It's a great event. And the program starts at about 1:00 at the Veterans Memorial, and there will be a Coast Guard flyover. As an Army mom, okay? Remember that Memorial Day is a day to remember those who gave their all.